Um, nobody use it under others?
Oh, others? That's at the end.
My call is meaning to order six oh one. Okay. Um, we have folks stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, we're going to move the agenda around a little bit. Mr. Magnuson, can we start with you?
Sure. Great. Everybody sits in the back. It was like my classroom.
No.
Okay, now I need this on here.
Uh...
Somebody in?
They control it in there.
Oh.
Is this showing up where you see it?
Yeah.
Not yet.
It's coming.
Coming.
Here it is.
Here it is. Not on the side.
I think they just figured.
It'll, it'll come, yeah?
There you go.
You're all set.
Perfect.
There you go.
It's like magic.
Okay, so Kathleen asked that I come and give a little report, a little summary about what I've been doing. First off, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I was kind of out of gas for the day-to-day teaching and, and put this proposal together and, and Kathleen and I worked that out. And it's a part-time position with part-time support, so it's, you know, I'd like it to get going a little bit more, but it's, it's the time that it's dictated with that. I kind of go back and forth between being a coordinator and a coach. And so the, uh, one of my most enjoyable things that's happened so far is I was in, this is your class, right, Amy?
Yeah, your class?
Yes.
Was it somebody's class I was in?
You didn't mind that.
Somebody did.
So I, right, so I, I did this lesson and right here where it said fossil blank map. And I was trying to get the kids to come up with the word there. And I was socratically asking the kids third grade and asking the kids, um, you know, what is it when scientists collect, you know, materials or information? And the kids had all kinds of answers. They're going back and forth and I could barely keep up. And so it was dragging on a little too long and I could see that. So I said, well, it's a kind of like a, a word that you might say for father. And this little girl raises her hand all excited and she says, I said, okay, and she says, dear. And so we cracked up and, and, and she missed it though, but, and I caught it. And so it's, uh, you know, my mother and father love that story, but, so we, this was a little activity that we did. One of the teachers said we're, we're doing fossils and I said, how many fossils do you have? And she said, none. And I said, none? I said, okay, I'll be back tomorrow with, uh, and brought in a great big box. And the kids were all excited, he's back, he's back, and he's got a big box. And so I, we did a little mapping of where the fossils were found. And we ended up finding out that the seashells were found on the land and that those were the representation of the ancient oceans that used to be there when the land all moved around and moved up and down. And that was, that was part of the, part of the lesson. Um, I do twenty hours a week and sometimes it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And I take Friday through Monday off. That's some of the things that I do. My, I said that I was a coordinator-coach and according to Timlin, Amy said, make sure you're not the, the science police. And so I made sure of that. That's what I, you know, wanted to, you know, make it a relaxed movement to, to try to get people interested. Sometimes I start early. Dave's not here, but I go by his house at about six fifteen because I'm still on the same internal time clock that I always have. So I go by his house and I blow the horn at six fifteen in the morning. So sometimes I start early and sometimes I start later on in the, in the day and, and depends if it fits into my yoga schedule or not. And that's not a joke. That's true story. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did a pose yesterday and, oh my goodness, I was still in pain, yeah. I do my research materials at home. That's, that's pretty easy to do. Last spring in anticipation of this position, I went to a Next Generation Science Standard conference in Milford. I'm going to another one on Friday. It's a New Hampshire ASCD and it's, uh, you ready for this, Sean?
No.
Shifts in science instruction. That's for you, okay? And this guy's one of the guys behind some of that, so, yeah. That was not sarcastic, was it, Sean?
No.
No, okay, right, yeah. So, um, this is my to-do list. Sean writes me these little notes, says, Al, look this up for me. Okay, I'm working on it. Putting out little fires like that. So the coordination is one of the things that I wanted to make sure is to be able to simplify. The Next Generation Science Standards are written by, I don't even know who, but it's, they are way out there and they're full of a lot of edge you speak jargon-type words. And I know all the elementary school teachers, they look at that and it's, it's, it's a bit freaked out. So the, um, Next Generation Science Standard website is very challenging to maneuver around and figure things out and get to exactly where you wanted to. If you do get to something, it has these, and it blocks all of your writing and it's a little bit challenging to see that. That's a second-grade performance expectation. It gets a little bit more involved at the middle school level and it's, and it's just, it's a little bit cumbersome. So the workshop that I went to in the spring, last spring, they recommended to go to the National Science Teachers Association website because I wanted to be able to show folks to, to get to a place that was easy to look at. And that's exactly what question that I, uh-oh, folks. Turn on the wifi. It was okay a minute ago. BOS, okay? Access, okay? So the National Science Teachers Association, or science standards, or the standards, and boom, they're right there and you can find wherever you want to go, very easy. And that other format is very challenging to maneuver through. So you can see K one, two, three, four, five, and then middle school is a little bit more advanced than that. And then high school is, is even beyond that. There's all kinds of these quick links over here. I have not gone through all of them. That's part of the things that I do to see if there's anything that, that might coordinate and be compatible with some of the teachers. And then when you go from the Next Generation Science site and pick up one of these, it puts everything there together. On the Next Generation Science Standard website, it's only singular. So this kind of is nice if a teacher wants to look at it and do some sort of unit development. So the first thing was I wanted to do is to be able to try to simplify because some of these are challenging to understand, Sean, and I still read them and, and say, what does that mean? And I don't know, what do you think it means? And we go back and forth on some of the middle school ones. And some of that educational language, science language difficulty goes right down to kindergarten performance expectations. So I just took and cut and pasted these here and then I simplified where I had to here on the simplified explanation. I've just taught with a few teachers and I'm getting some, um, grade-level science prep, uh, side, grade-level science reps, um, meetings next week. And we're going to go over what things coordinate with these and where we might move some things around if we had to. Time of the year that it might be taught, what kind of help I could offer and some different things like that. And then interdisciplinary. And one of the things that was nice about the, um, this website is that it has this neat little hover and you can find exactly what you want. These science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts are left over national science curriculums, Common Core curriculums that have been years in the making. And I think that they tried to inject all of these and dovetail all of these together so that they, um, these, these old timers wouldn't lose some of their stuff. You probably recognize some of these, Andrea, things that, remember when we did patterns and, and then there are these.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, was that with old timers?
I didn't say old, old. Okay, so.
Oh, that's even worse!
Right, that's what I mean. So, um, so if you, if you go to something like this, I'm not going to do that, but it takes you to an extended reading if you wanted to learn a little bit more about that. And then down here, it shows, um, this is much better than the other website. Interdisciplinary approaches over here are vetted resources and lessons and they go quite a bit. You can see all of these. I haven't gone through all of these. And when somebody asks me to look something up, that's when I'm going to tackle that. So going back to this, I did these for every single grade level, for every single standard. So they all, every, everybody has that. And then I, I gave ideas and suggestions of charts or documents or graphing or things like that where I thought it might be, uh, compatible. And then to help, I haven't shown these to everybody yet, but that'll do that in the, in the grade-level rep meetings, is how to organize the topics and maybe to have some organization to a unit. And I did this and it's, it's pretty simple. This is second grade. And you can see there'd be three little units there. And then there are these engineering ones that, just by doing good science, a lot of the elementary school teachers, um, we, we, you guys, we pay for a program which is called Mystery Science. And a lot of these, um, topics and performance expectations can be understood there. And, uh, and then there are enrichment activities and that's where some of the work that I've, I've come in to do. Then there's the testing results and next, next week, Sean, at the, we have, is that right? Demonstrated success with Anne Morikai. She's coming to talk us through some of the ones. I just put third through fifth up here and where it's partially proficient. And I did that in a numerical ascending order and then all the way up to where we would have the strengths in those classes there, so. Liz, you haven't seen this yet, have you?
That piece?
No, you haven't, so that's coming, yeah. And then at some, at some point, um, I might share here, these are the observable features or the evidence statements. And this is what you kind of, at the end or the conclusion. And this is only on the Next Generation Science Standard site. These are things that you could look at to see if the kids kind of understood and, and kind of got what, what, what the approach you were doing. I haven't really looked at my notes. I've just been cruising along here, so that's going pretty good. How am I doing for time lesson?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
I go like this when you're getting long.
All right, like this, yeah. So, um, future things that I need to do is, is, there's just so many things to look at. And I'm not sure, you know, what the value of those are for the teachers at the teacher level and the day-to-day level. So I have a lot of these things that I'm, you know, going to be looking at, whether it's the, this website or the other website. And, um, this is just multiple, multiple layers on there. I've been documenting everything on a, in a book here. Superintendent wants to take that, publish it, make some money for her. And, sorry. And so, um, I, by, one of my enjoyable things I did, I went from, from substituting in eighth grade and I got into every single grade level into two or three classrooms. It took a few weeks to do this and then hung out there. And when the teachers gave their instructions, I asked if there was, if I could help. And so I worked with kids from eighth to kindergarten. And of course, the biggest thing is, is that the chairs get smaller, okay? So when you're at kindergarten level, you're sitting way down here like this. And, and that was wonderful because I, that was one of the first things I wanted to do was to understand, you know, the range of kids. And, and what I was impressed with was the, the, the quality of the education and the hard-working teachers is just, and I told the principals that, it was very impressive. And it's, um, you know, going to be, you know, excellent for me to be able to be a part of that. So I, I really enjoyed that. And so now I'll be getting more into the classrooms and meeting with teachers and, you know, more and more of the day-to-day science, I would say. I have, let's see, I've got, I've got to work on Sean's project tomorrow. I've got emails to go over there. Kind of where I'm, where I'm at, so, any questions? Yeah?
How is this transitioning into the classroom itself with the students?
Good question. So, um, so the teachers are at a place now where they're saying, um, somebody has sent me a thing about geology. They're working on the Earth was one massive continent at one point. They said, Al, what do you have on Pangaea? And can you bring that and show me what you have? There's a, I forget the grade level, we're going to start weather. I think that's third grade. So they're saying, what, what can we do with that? One teacher said, I'm not that comfortable with weather topics. Can you give me a little lesson? I can do the lesson myself like I did with that third-grade mapping activity. And, and so I, I can team teach and support there. I can go in. Even if the, I, I went into, um, second grade and I helped to that. All the second graders had made these hats that were supposed to protect from the sun and all this. It was a science lesson. It was, started with a mystery science and then followed up. And, and there were, every second grader was in there, so I was helping. I, I tied their necks on, you know. But I got, that's one of the things I was able to, to do, so. Does that answer your question?
To some degree.
Yeah, yeah.
But you've identified some areas of weaknesses or improvement needs in that chart with the.
Yeah, that'll be something to look at, yeah.
To look at and to band upon.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I didn't want to go in and, you know, say this is what my mom doing right. This, I wanted to develop a relationship with the kids and the teachers and the, get the process. And I wanted to have that simplified so that they could understand, you know, that it's, it's not that hard and that, that we can work together on that, so, yeah.
And in your opinion, okay, based on what you're seeing here at the NSTA?
Yeah.
Okay, is that addressing the issues or the shortfalls we have on the exam pieces that we face? Or is that?
It might be too soon for me to answer that, I think, yeah. I'd have to go and.
But it's a stepping point.
Oh, that's absolutely would, would draw that into it. Because those, those things that I identified on there were the actual things that I'm sharing with the teachers, things that they are doing well with or something that they might need some improvement with. And it's not like dramatic improvement. Partially proficient is.
Well, it's the first year.
It's the first year too, yeah, so.
What, what grade level was Pangaea? Do you remember? Was it kindergarten, was it kindergarten?
No, 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 no. I think it was your granddaughter's level. I think it was third or fourth grade? Fourth grade, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm only working off the memory of a stack of emails, so, yeah.
No, I just, I have a grandson Kay who's very into Pangaea.
Yeah.
I was like, okay, what do you know?
Yeah, yeah, so. Anything else?
Every kid has email.
Is there anything that you need from us as a board?
Nope, I don't, I don't think so. It's, you know, I'm, if I have any questions, I ask Kathleen and she, actually, I don't do it that way. She makes sure I come and visit her frequently, yeah, yeah. Al, time for a meeting, okay? Yeah, so.
Um, and where do you see the program going into the next phase or stage?
At some point, it would be nice to have the teachers have a, like a, a go-to something that, that they don't have to go and look for. Because to be honest, the, you know, the, they're working on the, you know, the reading and some of the writing skills and the math skills, I think, more aggressively. And so, but if they had something in place that I could help coordinate and they say, oh, well, we're going to do for those fossils. Boom, there it is fossils, whether it's a, an actual little, you know, container that has fossils in it with the handouts in it, or whether it's something electronically that they can just document and go to that file. So that's, yeah. But that's a, that's a little ways away to make that all happen, especially in a part-time, you know, role that I'm in, so.
So one of the things that I asked Al to do was to, as he goes around in the classrooms, to identify those things that the teachers would need to support whatever their unit of instruction is. So he's, he's got a list of materials there and also places to go on the internet so that he can support the instruction in the classroom.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay. Board member updates, budget, right?
Uh, well, SAU ninety does have a, a meeting or a rendezvous with the budget committee tomorrow to review our budget for 2019, 2020.
And that's right, right here at seven o'clock?
Tomorrow, here at seven o'clock.
Okay, wellness, Andrea?
Uh, we have a meeting coming up later this month, I think on the sixteenth.
Uh, school boards association, nothing. We took some votes on what I'm supposed to do on the twenty-sixth. I'm registered. I'll be there.
You'll be there.
Uh, learning collaborative, Frank?
I have to, uh, pass to Kathleen on that one. I haven't been to any meetings, so.
They're doing very well in terms of enrollment, full house. All their programs are, you know, full. They have some programs that have waiting lists. Their transportation system, they hired a new transportation coordinator. Hans done awesome. They have, they've done very well and, um, and kept their head above water. But they do have a new coordinator who has a lot of new ideas and has been very, very, very helpful. They are working with Trident. As you all know, Trident was our project advisor. And they are looking at a piece of property on one twenty-five, as we talked about earlier, and are working with a company that could develop a building for them. So they've been to the banks. They have some guaranteed loans, very low interest rates because of their, you know, their status as a school. And so I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful. They continue to work with the local, um, school here in town, Beckett, to send students to. They support them academically, so that's been a good collaboration between SLC and that, and that, um, that school, so.
So are they, uh, and this is just a question in general, but are they looking, uh, at, looking at enrollment now versus what it would be ten years from now as far as when they start to build their classrooms or?
In terms of expansion? Well, that, that, they haven't really talked about that. That's a great point, Frank. They, they're really looking at what they can handle right now with their programs full and not, and not having added any additional, um, programs. But their high school program is, is filled, their early autism class is filled. So I, I think when they begin the final plans to develop the, you know, the plan for the building, I think that will be part of that discussion. Hope we can do that in May when we all meet together.
Okay. Uh, negotiations with Paris?
That's done, completed, but again, that will be subject to tomorrow. And a later vote. And a later.
Rec department, Pepper?
No, we don't meet to the last Wednesday of the month.
Uh, building committee?
We have a meeting, um, again in.
January sixteenth.
The next Wednesday, week from tomorrow.
Okay. Comcast, fine?
We haven't met since that last time that I reported. We are looking at a possible meeting sometime later this month. They are looking at a survey to go out to the community, so they're finalizing that piece right now.
Curriculum, Andrea?
Well, all of the curriculum committee area, I mean, sorry, all of the curriculum areas, especially the music, art, and library, continue to work on common assessments, performance-based assessments and alignment of their curriculum with Common Core or the NGSS standards.
Uh, professional development, Pepper?
Yeah, there hasn't been any meetings.
We have a meeting, uh, the PD committee is meeting next week, next Tuesday, I think, if you check your schedule. Pepper, it's on, yeah.
Sunday.
I think it's Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, public comment on agenda items? Hello?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Liz Doust and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Marston. And, um, I wanted to talk with you folks about early release days. And I know, um, a request has been made by Amy Murphy on behalf of, um, all of us teachers to have more early release days. And I think as teachers, we always are under, um, under pressure for time. And everybody always wants more time. I think anyone in education knows why. So last night I thought, well, how can I articulate why we need more time? Because our district does give us time. I've had release time with small groups for science to develop curriculum. I know my colleagues have had time for math and science to meet with demonstrated success. We've had, we've had staff development days at the beginning and the end of our school year. And we do have a few early release days during the school year. Two of those early release days, one is a comp day for Thanksgiving, not Thanksgiving. One is a comp day for our March conferences. And one other early release day is for our March conferences. So that left us three early release days left. One of them is for placement. Another one is devoted to Dr. Driscoll and revolutionary schoolswork. So that brings me to my point. We need more time where teachers can propose what we need to work on so that as grade levels, as departments, and even within vertical teams from grade level to the next, we can do the work that we need to do with curriculum. We have kids sitting in front of us each year and their needs, their needs change. Grade level needs change. If you look at the scores, they, they change a little bit. And the outcome from the testing changes. We want to be able to work together to do some creative things to meet their needs. And it is absolutely wonderful that we are being trained in small groups of teachers. That's huge. We need time to bring that back and train the rest of our staff. If we don't have any time built in to bring back the wonderful things we're learning in these small groups, how is that going to affect all students? It only if, it, it doesn't, I mean, we're doing the work. I don't want you to misunderstand that because our, our teachers are like that. We're doing our curriculum work before school, after school, during our planning time, during the summer. I'm sure you've seen, small groups are meeting during the summer to accomplish things. But we want to be thorough and we want to. But we wanna be thorough, and we wanna be consistent, and we want all of us to be as well-trained as the person next door. So, we're asking for more days so that we can do that, um, more release days. And I'd say lastly, since I've been teaching a while now, um, I have, um, twenty-five years. Anyway, um, what I noticed is a big change, is that we aren't doing, uh, programs. There was a time where everyone was teaching everyday math, or everyone was teaching, um, Harcourt, or everyone was teaching something from a textbook. Now, we're more eclectic than we've ever been, we always have been eclectic, we're not gonna just teach a textbook. But, all of our resources are coming from so many different areas and so many different, um, programs on the internet that we need time across six classes in fifth grade to say, what's valuable, what's not valuable, um, what's the most effective? And in order to do that, we need to meet, and we do have common planning time, once a week, and I know, uh, the middle school may have a little bit more. We have common planning time, but it's forty minutes a week. And within that, we're also asked to respond to student data, bring up specific students who need interventions. We're asked to give feedback on something like a school-wide initiative. So if we're doing all of those things and trying to complete curriculum work, it's, it's a little tricky, and it becomes more catch-as-catch-can instead of thoughtful, reflective work. So that's where our request for release time comes from. It's, um, we're, we're thankful for the training that's happening now, I know for me in science, it was invaluable. And it's, it's changed my practice completely and helped change the practice of others. We just wanna be meet, more, even more effective doing what we're doing.
Questions?
So you said you're, been a teacher for twenty-five?
Yeah. I'm in denial, thank you, it's my mother's genes, no. She taught for thirty years.
Was all twenty-five within, uh?
Hampton, twenty-three, we're at Hampton, yep.
Okay, and you were part of SAU twenty-one before you became SAU ninety?
Yes, yes.
And how was your planning time at SAU twenty-one versus what you currently have now?
Um, you know, I think, I think what we did differently when we were part of SAU twenty-one, I think there may have been one or two days that were full days embedded within the school year, more than what we currently have. I'm not so sure we had more early release days at that time. Although, I think members of SAU twenty-one in their individual schools have more early release days embedded in their schedule. Lincoln, Lincoln Ackerman has eight, Seabrook has nine early release days. Um, and then, and then there's some that are out of district that are different. Uh, North Hampton has four early release days, but they have, I'm not sure where their five in-service days fall. But it, it really, there are a number of districts around us that have a lot more than we do. And then there's some that are probably about even with us. Um, and I think Amy supplied some school calendars for folks. Yes, um, that kinda outlines that. Um, but I, I live in New Market, and I'd say they're, they're similar to us, but the difference is they have more embedded full days in their calendar throughout the school year. Uh, and that, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought that up. Because what I notice is, we do have a good amount of time before school and at the end of our school calendar. Where I think we're missing some of our time is throughout the school year, and, and it's not that those days on either end aren't valuable, they are, but boy, there's some things I see that we should be doing uh, during the school year, and, and you're just grasping to get time to do it. You know, I can do it individually, but it's, it's more effective when I have their, their help, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Was there anyone else that, Amy?
Hello?
Hi, I'm Amy Murphy. Um, I am the vice president of the Seacross Education Association. So please understand that when I speak to you, I'm speaking on behalf of the educators of Hampton. I am not just speaking on behalf of myself or my fifth grade team. I sent a letter to, um, the chairman, and I imagine that, I think, last time he had said that he had sent it out to everybody. I don't need to reiterate that information there, you all have that. I, I also, um, provided some calendars, and I believe you probably all have those calendars. Um, it, it would have been a packet, and I put little asterisks next to the information as far as, um, the early release days. When Al got up here earlier, and we're so lucky to have Al, my daughter had Alan, absolutely loved him, and he brings a wealth of knowledge, and in fifth grade, we, some of us teach science and some of us teach social studies. And I have to tell you, I'm a little bit envious of the people who teach science, even though I love social studies, but they get Al. Um, so I, I, I am a little bit envious of that, but, you know, Al's a perfect example of if, if we had some extra release time, where you could have vertical teams meeting and pull those people in together, so, so Al's directing everybody and, and helping everybody and guiding them to really, to, to make sure that we're all getting this information consistently across the board. We have three science teachers in fifth grade, and, and Liz has been doing that, and it's been great, but she's the one who's getting the messages. It's, it's important for everybody, so we have the, the consistent delivery across the curriculum. So, I, I ask, please, that you consider giving us some more release time. I understand that the superintendent has a report, um, that she has for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that may come up as a result of that report. But I, I don't know if I need to spend any more time, because I've, I've taken up some time at the last meeting as well as, um, the letter that you have. So I didn't know if you had any questions for me, um, or if anybody had anything else.
I don't, no, I've been thinking about it for quite a long time.
Okay.
Um, I not only looked at the material that you provided us, but I went on websites and I
Great.
Went through and I would see, most of the big districts, I'll take Exeter for an example, they have, or SAU twenty-one, they have several early release days that are for the whole district.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then the individual school districts, be it Brentwood or New Fields or whatever, they set their own calendar, which is what SAU twenty-one does.
Yes.
So, they're all over the place, uh, you know, you, you could find, I'll just use New Market for an example, with four early release days, you could find Brentwood or Seabrook, for an example, with nine. So, um, I don't think it's an exact science. But what I did see is that I think the SAU ninety teachers could clearly use more. That's one man's opinion. Ho- however-
One woman's opinion.
However, I would be reluctant to add any release days this year, for this current calendar.
That's not what anybody's asking.
So we would be thinking for next year's calendar?
Yes, for nineteen twenty, that was what the request was.
And, and as one person, um, I, I would be in favor of adding two, perhaps three, for next year. Although there would be no guarantee that, I mean, things come up, it, you know, you may have to use them for safety-related, for Al's training, for so on and so forth, but I think there's a need, need for those, and, um.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion.
Well, before we make motions, I'd like to ha- have the superintendent's input.
Uh, just for clarification purposes?
Uh-huh.
Uh, you mentioned New Market, uh, New Market has three full days, and three half-days.
Yeah, I just started off the top.
So, that, that to me calls for, if you've cut those to half-days, you've got an extra six, so you've got, you're up to nine.
I don't think the request was for full days, it was for-
Absolutely, no.
But I'm just evaluating the situation.
Okay, you, you have some material in front of you now.
Do you want me to sit down?
Well, yeah, we're not gonna real, yeah, we're not sure, 'cause we're not really gonna debate, I think, everybody-
No, I don't, I don't wanna, I, that's not what we're looking to do at all, it, it's, it's just to have a discussion. And please understand, this is really what we feel is best for children, and as educators, how we can best meet our students' needs, so.
So just in response to your request last, I think it was the last meeting, you asked me to do, uh, an analysis of all the districts around us. So, I took, similar to what Les did, I took all the calendars, I reviewed everyone's calendar, um, and it's in front of you, I don't really need to, to, to really go over too much of it. But I took all of the communities that have been listed and mentioned, and starting with Epping. Um, and you can see, if you go right down the list, I wrote the number of release days based on the calendars that I, that, um, I have. So, and you, when you look at New Market, they have three release days, they had three full days, okay? Now, I, when I did these days, they were only days during the school year. It wasn't like the days before school or after school, 'cause I, I think that gets, and also, there were some districts that called for a release day, but it was a day that they all went home, everyone went home, like the, like the day before Thanksgiving, or the day before Christmas. I think that was the most common one. So I didn't count that one, even though a district may have said they had a release day, so, I mean, it's pretty clear. Um, some districts, like Oyster River, don't have any release days, and they have four, um, days built in. Also included, just so you have that information, how many teacher contract days, as well as the number of student instructional days. And, um, and, and so that was your request, and I wanted you to have that. And you can see that it is all over the place, where, you know, um, Southampton has four release days and no full days. And, and Seabrook has nine release days, but no full-day workshops. So, every, it, it was really hard to kinda, you know, apples and oranges don't really work here. I think that, um, it was highlighted a little bit in that, um, in Hampton, uh, we, we employed unique strategies for professional development. There's no question that the research is very clear, that embedded professional development, um, is most beneficial to our teachers. And so that was the strategy that I implemented here in the district, uh, to help our teachers, uh, garner skills uh, to help meet the needs of our students. My, my effort has always been around students, I, I hope you realize that. This has always been, when you, like with Al, talking tonight, his job is a coach. He helps the teachers with science and skills and activities, that, and things that they may not have. And so, that's, that's a bit of PD right there, by the fact that Al is in the classrooms and providing that. So we, we tried to take PD and look at it a little bit differently. Um, we also, um, as was mentioned, that we employed a number of outside trainers. Uh, we've been working very successfully with demonstrated success. Uh, we've also been working on curriculum development with Dr. Driscoll, that's all professional development that our teachers have. Um, and, uh, also with, uh, Math Mean, uh, the Math Science Partnership that came down and worked with our science teachers. We've also employed the train-the-trainer model, so that you train some people and they spread that to other teachers. That was, that's very, that's been very successful. In addition, at both elementary schools, uh, teachers have forty to forty-five minutes of each week of CPT, which gives them an opportunity to be with their team, um, and, and their classes are covered by other teachers. Um, and, and as was mentioned, the middle school meets every day as a team. Um, we've also been very active in providing our teachers here in Hampton with opportunities outside of the day and the, um, and, and outside of the workday by attending, um, science symposiums, I think you've, um, currently, we, right now, we have, uh, Nate, Nate Sadler is in Washington doing some science work. Um, we have curriculum-based measures, we've been working on the PACE project, um, around, uh, curriculum-based, um, measures. And also, as you know, we've been very focused on the trauma, and, again, these were things that we provide support for our teachers. We provide them with substitutes and give them opportunities to, um, garner professional development. Listen, I acknowledge the fact that time has always been an issue for teachers. Um, I, they referred to the number of years, ever since I started teaching, time has always been an issue for teachers. There's no question about it, I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that. And, and we have made professional development and professional learning a priority in this district. I would like to ask that, um, with, with the advice of the chair, that I go, return back to the Professional Development Committee, we are meeting next week, um, and, um, strategize about ways in which we can provide additional time for our teachers. I have talked to both, um, elementary building principals, and, um, to try to figure out ways in which we can, um, keep the kids in school, have them engaged in good instruction without sending them home. We already use four days, kids get sent home, I think that's a, a burden on a lot of families in our community. And so I've always been sensitive to that, um, and, and having the kids stay in school. I think we can work a schedule out, I talked to Tim and Lois, that we could, um, uh, provide teachers with additional hours each trimester so that they could meet as a team. But I would like to bring that back to the Professional Development Committee, which, again, is meeting next Tuesday, um, and see how they feel about it. I mean, they do make the recommendations around professional development. I, I use them as a committee to help provide that direction for me. So, questions, I don't know if you have any questions?
Who is on the committee?
There's representatives from every school, and yeah, Pep is on it, um, Michelle Wood is on it, um, Amy Murphy is on it, Amber Levine is on it, um, uh, Mrs. Dutton from the middle school is on it.
I think Mr. Dutton.
Mr. Dutton is also on it, um, we have, uh, actually, all of our principals are on it. Some are able to be there every meeting, um, Jessica Parsons is on it as the spe- representing special ed. Um, Lois and Tim are always at all the meetings, Dave, depending on what's going on at his school, but Dave does attend, so. It's a pretty, pretty good representation of our staff.
Okay.
And there was all point-by-principals, I don't, we don't, they, they volunteer or whatever, so.
But I also heard that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, that they're asking for time to meet to address issues of particular students that are on the team, is that correct or not correct?
Well, we, that's something that we can do during CPT.
Yeah.
But what we're looking at is an opportunity, and we're doing a lot of different curriculum work, so the opportunity to reflect, review, and revise, because if we're not improving on our craft, then we're, we're really not doing the best that we can. So, we're, we're, we have, we're, we're actually very fortunate, coming up at our next, um, early release day, we are able to give a proposal as to what our teams want to do, and we're looking for more opportunities like that.
So you're looking for more direction?
We're looking for more opportunities.
But direction towards the class, the students?
Oh, 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 it's, it's all, it would all impact direct instructions to students.
Students, okay.
For example, our proposal next Staff Development Day is to respond to the data we got back from, um, our last, last year's state testing. And we wanna look not only at the class we had, but the class, um, that we currently have, and map out a way to respond to their scores as a grade level. If we have a grade level that's low in certain skills, like nonfiction, um, selections in language arts, we wanna map out a way to respond to that as a grade level, uh, in our instruction, in our teaching methods, and in our resources.
Okay.
So, so every school does it a little bit differently, Tim has two data dira- data days, and his teachers get substitutes, and they review all of that data on students twice a year, so that they create plans for those kids. So, the te- the, each of the buildings has been allowed to have some flexibility around how they address some of the issues. And, um, so it, it's not all exactly the same in every building.
But the flexibility isn't built into the calendar?
The flexibility is built into the school day.
Into the school day. Okay, you were a teacher, how did you find it?
I think one forty-five minute CPT a week is, I'm sorry, but that is not nearly enough for these teachers to get together, to do all the things that we're asking them to do, not even remotely. And you can get substitutes in there, and you can give them a day, but that's just my opinion. I think our teachers have come to us on behalf of their students, I think they've been reasonable in asking. I think they've been reasonable in asking for even one more half day. And, and I would, in all respect and appreciation for everything you've done with the, with the Professional Development Committee, I think that's awesome. But our teachers on behalf of their students have come to us and they have asked for at least, at the very least, one more half day. And I think out of respect for them and the respect for our students, we ought to give them that.
But one half day really doesn't accomplish what they're trying to say.
I'm trying to give them.
Well, there's no guarantee that if we gave them two half days, or three half days, or four half days, that it's going to resolve what you're thinking. It just, maybe used for something else, who, who knows?
We, we don't have control over that.
Yeah, right, right.
But, um, it would be greatly appreciated if we could get that time and, and be able to give them the opportunity to make those decisions that we feel is really best meets the needs of our students.
Yeah.
Give it a try.
Would, would you say that if we looked at giving them three half days for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, on top of what they have, would be more beneficial?
I would even, I would even go with two, just to give them a chance to try what they need to try, to do what they need to do. And I respect them enough to say that they could come back and tell us. We've got, we've accomplished what we need to accomplish. We've got a lot of initiatives going on in this district, a lot of initiatives. And they need time to, I don't know, to pull it all together and work together on behalf of our students. And, and again, please don't, please don't misunderstand me. I appreciate what the PD committee is doing. I appreciate and respect all the things that you're bringing in for our teachers on behalf of our students, but you need time to pull it all together and they don't have time, especially with one forty to forty-five minute CPT a week. It's not enough. It's just not. You're asking them to work hours after school. It's just not enough.
And I remind you that the middle school has a period of day. So I just, I'm, I'm, just want you to have the information. What you do with it is, is your choice, but, you know, when you say that, you have to understand that our middle school teachers do have.
The middle school has more.
Right.
And I don't know what things, well, I do know for a fact, things are a little more complicated.
Elementary.
Center.
And Marston.
And Marston.
Center and Marston.
Yeah. That, that's why I'd like to propose a, a plan that will keep the kids in school and that will give another six hours of professional development to the teachers at Marston and Center without changing the schedule. So you, you recommended, um, two, two, um, half days, which is equivalent to six hours. I'd like to take that six hours and take it and, and match it up. I talked to Lois and Tim and, and, and combine it with their CPT time.
But then that's gonna cost the district money. Could we have to bring in subs?
I was not gonna bring in subs because I looked at the schedule.
When are they gonna do it?
I looked at the schedules of the staff that's available during that time and because of student enrollment and classes and the number of classes in each of the building, we have staff in the building that are available to cover those classes and which would allow kids to have an extra art, an extra gym, an extra computer class, an extra library class, because those teachers don't have as many classes. And so we, I, I, I'm exploring that opportunity.
I'm not, okay.
I, I.
And I think that's a lot of information, frankly.
I, I think that's a, a great idea, okay? And if you could get six hours, that would be great. However, I would like to get that six hours on top of two early release days added.
All right, then.
So that would give us two early release days and then two more embedded possibly release days. So I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion and then we, we have discussion. That for the next year's calendar, we fit two more early release days in and I hope we can spread them out and I hope we can get some early in the year. Cause when I looked at the calendar, it didn't seem to be too many, but I was looking at so many calendars, I, I can't remember. So that's my motion. Two early release days for next year. Is there a second?
Are you saying two or six? Okay, so you're saying six?
No, they only have.
They have four.
So we're, yes.
But the four early release days, okay?
Don't count the twenty-first.
You can't count the twenty-first because, because the teachers stay, oh, stay for parent teacher conferences.
I think you're wrong, Frank. I think you're wrong. Let's, right here it says for early release days, teachers in service four.
Right, right. But, but two of those day that was explained, if you were listening.
I was listening, Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Can I finish, can I finish, please? One, okay, is because of parent teachers conferences and they get the day of, before Thanksgiving off, okay? Then the other one is for March, parent teachers conferences, which is a half day, which was explained, which was confusing to me. So technically they get three half days because of that parent teachers conference in March.
Is that true?
That's correct. What he just said was in March, they get a half a day, parent teacher conference is their release day. So the kids go home and they hold parent conferences.
Right.
The, they often go later on at night, so they have the half a day before Christmas is to compensate for their evening. The same holds true with, they are compensated prior to Thanksgiving for a full day for their parent conferences. So that, that kinda wipes it out. So Frank's right. They have three professional developments if you exclude parent conferences.
Okay, so three release teacher in service. And then we have one full day.
That's correct.
So we have four.
But the one full day is to offset parent teachers conferences.
No, no.
But that full day is usually, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that full day is usually directed from the superintendent's office on what they're gonna be doing that day.
Not necessarily. Depends on what the, what's happening in the, in the districts.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a straight answer here. All right? We have three now, half release days and we have one full day.
That's correct.
With Mr. Shepherd's, uh, motion, we're gonna have five release days.
Plus the one for parent conference.
Plus the one for parent conference, so we're gonna have.
Six.
Six.
And, and I might even make a suggestion that, um, it, the half day, where, where Hampton Academy, according to you and from what I've experienced, has more CPTs. Perhaps we could try to align the half days with what's going on with SAU twenty-one. Just a thought, just a thought. Where eighth grade, for instance, or any of the vertical teams could meet with the other teams from, of teachers from the other schools. Just a thought.
Okay, so you, you made the motion.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Okay, well, I wanna amend your motion.
Okay. Well, you'll have to vote it down first, cause I'm not gonna accept an amendment.
Why can't I amend it?
Because I'm the one that made the motion and I'm not accepting your amendment.
You can't do that, Frank.
So did Pep second it or did I second it?
I don't, one of us did.
All right, I'm seconding it.
Okay, all right. I'll accept your amendment. But you have to make it to get a second.
So, go ahead. Want me to make the amendment now?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think that we should look at nine, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty with at least a minimum of three half days for the two, all right? And then also give them a one half day this year, so they can work on whatever they have to work on. Because that one half day that they get in March, okay, is basically aimed at parent teachers. So they're not getting anything accomplished, meeting with parents, if they're not meeting to discuss curriculum and their students. So that's what I'm making my amendment.
Is there a second to Frank's amendment?
Well, well, yeah, I'll second it, give them a half day this year.
Okay. Discussion. I, I don't think we should touch the calendar this year.
I don't think so either. It's been set, it's been approved by all parties and I don't think we have any business changing it.
This current one.
This current one, right? We went through the debates, we went through, listen, everyone had their say back then and I don't think we should touch it. That's just my personal opinion.
No, no, and, and I agree with you, but when we had the discussion, when we had the debates, this wasn't really brought forward.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, so now that it's been brought forward, I'm looking at it from a logical perspective that if they're looking for extra time to address the issues in the classroom with the students, okay, then we as a board should give them that opportunity and it's only one half day.
Two hours.
Okay? If we think anything of kids in this district, then we should vote for it.
I don't think that's true.
I don't think that's right, Frank.
I don't think that's true.
Because you're ready, I could go down a list of other departments that we need to meet, we, about children, if we care about children in this district.
Well, I'm just saying.
So let's not go there.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm just bringing it up.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay. So the motion is, help me out. It was, it was my motion, which was two days.
Went to three and a day.
You have to vote on the amendment first, cause Andrea's.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do need to, we need to vote on Frank's amendment, you're right.
Which is for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year.
Nineteen twenty, yeah.
Would give them a minimum of three half days and also give them a half day this year.
Which was seconded by Andrea. All right. All those in favor of that amendment? Opposed? So the amendment fails, so we're back to the motion, which was to add two early release days for next year. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Was it three, one, one? Okay. And I hope the superintendent can, can find additional hours. I mean, maybe if it works out, we'll get to the point, we won't need any release days sometime, I don't know. I suspect that's a reason why a lot of you are here and thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay, but feel free to go home and work on those lesson plans. Okay. Nobody wants to stay to hear my report?
No.
No, they don't care if we have the money, but just, yeah.
As long as you keep paying them, they're all set.
Yeah. Hold a government shutdown, see what happens.
Principals reports. Mr. Lannan?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I apologize, I'm not really feeling that well.
Uh-oh.
Everybody's not feeling well.
Uh-oh.
Uh, you had a chance to take a look at my report. Do you have any questions?
Nope. A lot going on, as usual.
As usual.
As usual, which is great.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. No questions, it's wonderful.
Awesome, thank you, have a great night, everyone.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Go home, Mr. Lannan. Seriously. Kathleen, I mean Lois?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm assuming you had a chance to look at my report. Obviously, ski clo- ski club is off and running, as you know. Um, Andrea, you had a chance to head up to McIntyre and watch a hundred and sixteen, um, third, fourth and fifth graders, um, participate in their first week, which is always, um, it's really wonderful to see in so many ways. Um, and it's, it's interesting, cause Sue Antico, my counselor, texted me and said, "How was, how was the first night? I'm just curious." I said, "Well, one person left to snowboard there, one person was in the infirmary and one person was having so much fun skiing that we didn't get home till eight o'clock at night." The, the third grader literally lost track of time and as we boarded the bus and realized that we were missing one, um, we, we all went off the bus. Nathan went to one lift, I went to the other and that third grader was having a grand time. And I said, "I recognize you're having fun, but at six o'clock, and it's now six forty-five, we're waiting for you, hun." So she eagerly got on the bus, so, um, it's just, it's really adorable. It is adorable to see it, you know, um, the way they start off and then, of course, the way they end. It's just remarkable to see this kinda growth with our kids. And Stephanie Westegren, um, really does a phenomenal job acting as the coordinator and ensuring the paperwork is filled out and we have all of our ducks in a row. And fortunately, we have people like Elizabeth Henderson, Brenda Givens, um, Caitlin Terry and Joy Domenicon, who assist along with myself and Nathan Sadler and lots and lots of parents who drive and grandparents, so. It's a real coordinated effort, so we love it. It's great to do it.
It was really good.
It's cute, it's really cute, so.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just a question on, on the pennies.
Yes.
Cause I have a drop call, so I can drop them off.
Anytime you'd like.
Okay.
Yep.
Anytime you'd like. We'll officially start that, um, the end of January and we'll do the collection for Families First. And they're so good to us, um.
Do you collect them like for the whole?
Yeah, we'll collect them right up through February break.
Right up to February.
Yep, so whenever you wanna do it, it's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we're happy to take that.
The, um, quick question.
Sure.
The safety drills, um, under the direction of our Hampton officials.
Yes.
Fire and police?
Yes, yes.
Yep, yep.
SROs?
Yeah, exactly. Um, we usually work through our SROs and Keith Lassard, who will call and schedule them and typically Detective Feely, um, Detective DeMarco will come over and they will bring some of their colleagues and they will assist with it. It really is more, um, actually, it is more Hampton PD, truthfully, as I'm thinking about it. We welcome anyone who wants to come and help us.
I'm guessing you watch the weather maps to do those.
We do, and, um, obviously, we're, by, by law, we have to get ten in and we try to get a lot in before the, the snow falls and then, of course, we try to do some of the other drills during the winter months, just to keep kids fresh, yeah.
Please congratulate, um, Ms. Cruz, um, for bringing in the UNH Northeast Passage Similarity Awareness Program. Sounds awesome. And also, uh, Mrs. Aviles and Mrs. O'Reardon, they're spooky sagas.
Yeah.
Children, that's pretty cool, that's really excellent. And, and give, uh, kudos to Mr. Sadler for attending that conference that he's at in Washington.
Yeah, it was, um, so Nathan left this morning and I was showing, uh, Superintendent Murphy earlier today. He sent me a text. He was at, he got up, got there early. He sent me a text and he was on the same flight as Senator Gene Shaheen. So she was in there, she was sitting there doing her work. He took a picture and he sent it to me and he said, "I, it looks like somebody else is here going to Washington this morning." So I said, "Well, maybe you can get down there and straighten things out." Obviously, unfortunately, none of the national museums Smithsonian's aren't open, but they're there and he'll have a full day tomorrow from nine to five, um, talking about science on a national level. We're really excited that he gets that opportunity to do that and, um, we're, we're just pleased that they're going to hear Hampton voices. So he does represent the entire district and obviously the work that Al Magnuson does and has done, but just a part of, um, the great work that we've done with Joyce Tugle as a district. So we're just happy to be able to share what information we have and hopefully we all learn from it, so. That's the goal.
Excellent, thanks, Lois.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, feel free to go if you, if you want, Lois.
Oh, thanks.
Would you think you would go?
Feeling in for Miss O'Connor?
Yes, I am. Fortunately, he, uh, is not feeling too well, so. Um, do you have any questions for me?
And how's the building progressing?
It's great. It's, um, I haven't been actually into the, um, the new old part yet, um, but when I- we arrive in the morning and it's still dark out, and the lights are on, it's amazing to see the progress that they're making in the walls that have come down, and the newer walls that have gone up, so.
Now, they work in where the library is now?
I am not sure, there's a lot of noise above that stairwell, the old stairwell, but I'm not exactly sure where in that building they are. I think the plan is that we're going to head over there in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
Anybody have any questions for Anna?
Wish Mr. O'Connor a happy birthday, I hope he feels better.
I will make sure to do that, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone bringing him a cake tomorrow?
He's probably watching.
Yeah, probably watching on TV. Okay, and feel free, Anna and Lois. Okay, um, Jessica.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Busy, busy?
Busy, busy, you all have my report, I'm sure you have questions.
I do.
I'm, here we go, Jenny.
Hey, you got twenty, you have seventeen students as of December third in the preschool. Right now, you have, currently could have thirty-six. That's a little scary.
It is.
It's very scary.
It's very.
And so thirty-six students plus the ten community students, so that's forty-six students.
Uh, no.
And the twenty plus the ten?
It, it could potentially be twenty-six, and then ten, so thirty-six total.
Okay, thirty-six, the thirty-six does include the.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, the, right now, as of the second, we have twenty attending our program.
Yep.
And then twenty identified students attending our program.
Yep.
And then ten community students. And I hope you guys know, just, just for clarification purposes, I know Jenny knows this, but not all twenty come at the same time, not all ten come at the same time, we have sessions, right, we have morning, afternoon sessions, and we have some kids go three days a week, some kids go two days a week, but in general, I mean, it's very nice for you to, or it's nice for you to know that the total amount of kiddos, because this is, you know, essentially, a teacher and a, a special education case manager and a speech and language pathologist who co-teach the preschool program. It is, Superintendent Murphy came to observe before vacation, and we all were in agreement that adding any more kiddos to the mix would certainly compromise our program and the great things that we do, so adding any more than, you know, we were, the numbers were going to go from like ten to twelve, up to like fifteen, and that's just way too many in a preschool classroom, even with the amount of, you know, you can't, you can add more pairs, right, but it's essentially, then it's still like babysitting versus actually getting into the instruction, and so, we discussed it as a group, and it's in my report, that we are proposing and would like to start with your kind of blessing tomorrow, and we worked out all of the details, is opening up an additional morning session so that we can pull some of those kiddos out, more, more than anything, just adding those new kids into a new morning session versus disrupting everything, so that we're able to kind of, and the numbers I outlined in the report for you, so you could see what, what that would look like, but Ms. Salvia, who is a former preschool teacher of ours, who has the certification, who's done it before in our school, because the kindergarten numbers are a little bit lighter right now, we're able to shift her over in the morning, she's able to service and do the preschool program, and then in the afternoon, she wouldn't have a preschool afternoon class, she would go back to her kindergarten class. The other nice thing is our grade-one numbers are light as well right now, and so our grade-one case manager is able to pick up, also pick up some of those kindergarten kids, and we're able to shift around. So, at this point, we don't need an additional teacher, we are able to absolutely make it work with, and make it work very well with our plan, with the staff that we have currently. It's just a matter of pulling all of the kids apart and not having them all in one space at one time.
So, quick question?
Yeah.
I'm going to use Ms. Salvia, okay. Have a clue who she is, but she was teaching kindergarten and then kindergarten, I'll do morning, and then she was kindergarten morning, kindergarten, now she's going to move to preschool in the morning.
Correct.
Who's going to teach that kindergarten class?
So, essentially, there's about six kiddos identified in kindergarten, and so she was just doing a lot of RTI services, or just doing additional support for kiddos that may have not have gone to preschool and have come in and aren't identified, so she was doing a lot of proactive kind of work in the classrooms, but none of her student services are being affected, we had to maybe make a few schedule changes, but she's able to service all of the kids with no problem.
And what's the number of children who are instructed?
In terms of, so, for the, for her preschool, she'll have seven kids on her caseload that are identified, and she has currently six kids on her kindergarten caseload, but one of those, one or two of those are appropriate to be instructed by the first-grade case manager, because it fits with the group, so we were able to kind of move some, some groupings.
And this, isn't that in a burden to this situation?
No, we sat down as a team, and they all felt very comfortable with it, you know, and, and, and in all honesty, Tim and I kind of said, you know, we have an idea, but what do you think, and they, they kind of helped us kind of come up with the solution, so it really was a collaborative effort, it wasn't us kind of saying, this is what we need to do, and, and Jenny was great, and, and they've already, they've already worked together to find her a space, they've filled the space for the, I mean, we're like ready to go, we just need kind of you to say, it's okay, we wanted to get, do all of the groundwork, so that, just.
So, let me just clarify one more time. So, the students that Ms. Salvia was seeing in the morning, they will be seeing someone else, someone will pick up the slack.
So, a lot of what can, happens in the kindergarten is pre-academic, and so depending on their schedules, they can still get their services in the afternoon, we, she's just shifting some of her times. So, it didn't, it didn't impact any of the special education kids' services, she was certainly helping out with some kiddos that may potentially be brought up, or that had some, when, when kids first enter kindergarten, which is why it's typically a lighter caseload, we don't have a ton of identified kids unless the preschool class came up, that's heavy. But we still have kids that may have never been to preschool before, so Jenny helps out with those things, but typically, by January anyway, we've gotten those kids into those routines, and they're in a better place, so she doesn't have to do as much of the, the proactive support with those non-identified kids, so does that make sense?
So, to clarify, how about on your report, you have two referrals, six in the process, they're not included in the thirty that.
Because I don't know if they'll qualify, Jenny.
Okay.
So, in-process means we're going through the evaluation process.
They're not included in these thirty-six.
No.
So, there's a possibility.
They are.
No, they are not.
No, no, he's asking.
What, what if?
What if they are, that's what I'm saying.
That's what you're getting at, right?
This is what I'm getting nervous about.
So, the other piece too is, if kiddos are qualifying for like speech and language or OT, but don't necessarily have a severe need, that they need to be in our program, we're just recommending related services, and that's one thing that we were a little bit lenient on before, because our numbers were so low, that we could have them come into the program, and now we kind of have a little bit more of a stricter standard in terms of when it's related services and when it's actually into our program.
Yeah, so I mean, we're potentially blowing up preschool, special needs preschool.
Yeah, and, and I think the other thing to know is that there's no way that we could, I guess, predict
Right, yeah.
This, because, you know, when a kiddo turns three, and a parent has a concern, they just come to us, right, and so it's not like they've been in our school district, and we know that they're coming along, so, and if they move in, or if a referral comes from another preschool, or if a referral comes from early intervention, those, but those are all things we cannot anticipate, so, it's just been one of those years, I reached out to the state on Friday to just kind of ask how, if this is happening in other districts and how they're combating that, and she said it absolutely is happening in other districts. She referred me to an organization that's grant-funded, that can come in and collaborate and consult with you. She talked, I, I told her kind of what we were thinking, she thought that this was a great model, she felt like it certainly is within kind of the special education regulations, and recommended that I continue to have conversations with the Race Decay to talk about how we can plan for future situations, so I'm in the process of, of doing that, to think about next year and the, in the following years. The hard part is, is I know who will graduate out of preschool, but I don't know who's going to come into preschool next year, so to say I need another classroom next year, it's hard for me to say that, and if we'd be able to fulfill it and have the numbers for that, for that classroom, and the other thing is, you want to have a decent amount of kids, not too many, but enough so that the social piece can happen, and the mo, the peer modeling and all of those things, so, the friendship kids are really important to our program, even though they take up spots in the program, if that makes sense, because there are ten additional spots in the program. And that's still ten kids, even though they're, they're not identified, there's, there's still instruction that needs to be, there's still certain supports that those kiddos need, just like in a general education classroom.
Kathleen?
Jess, there's some students in the twenty identified preschoolers that only come in for speech and language, OT or PT?
Yes, four.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, when you're thinking about delivery and in the classroom, those youngsters are only there for that therapy and then they're home.
Correct.
Their parent comes and picks them up or whatever, okay, I just want to be clear about that. I mean, it does, that's not the answer, by the way, because we're watching these numbers, and I did observe the class and go in and watch and see where the level of need for the children too is really, that doesn't show up here, right? So, we're, we're going to watch this very carefully, and as we looked around at other neighboring school districts, everyone is, is struggling with the same issue, so. And I think you know that, Jenny, from just your experiences.
Our preschool has gone from twelve children to eighteen in a month, in two weeks.
So, what's to prevent that from growing next month?
Well, one of the problems, one, one of.
There's nothing except.
Jenny gets a waitlist, I don't get a waitlist.
One of the, one of the things that happened, Frank, is, is that one of our preschools closed, and it had over fifty students. And they closed for a variety of reasons, mostly financial, and as a result, it put a significant impact on all of the preschools in the community. So, that's an issue that I've been discussing with the state, because I'm very concerned about the ability of our private preschools to maintain their schools, given the, the, the financial burden that they have to hold, so, it's one of the things that Jenny and I have been working on.
Can I ask you about the sixteen waiting for intake on the school-based therapy waypoint?
Yes, so, Waypoint, which was formerly Child and Family Services.
Oh, okay.
We had started a relationship with them early on in the fall, unfortunately, due to certifications and kind of all the state certifications with the person that we were working with at Waypoint, there were just, there was some red tape they had to go through, and so the goal was for them to start officially this week, the other thing is, they had to come into an onsite, they had to check all of our schools to make sure that we had all of the safety features in place, that we had phones and printers available in every office, so that caseload should be starting this week, we, the last week, all of the counselors met with the new Waypoint therapist who will be coming in to support, and this really takes the place of Seacoast Mental Health, when Seacoast Mental Health was coming in, and they were essentially not renting, but using our space to provide therapy, so that kids or families that couldn't get to a therapist after hours, and this, so this is taking the place of that.
Okay.
Yep.
What type of contingency plan do you have in place, or will have in place, in case these numbers increase in February and March?
So, that's where I'm, I'm talking with Race Decay to figure out, like, what some of the other districts have done, in terms of, and what their recommendations are for contingency plans. So, I don't have one at this point, Frank, but I'm in the process, and I've talked with Kathleen and Tim and the preschool team, and we're trying to come up with a plan. We really want to look at the numbers of kiddos that are graduating to kindergarten, and then kind of where we're going to end the year, and depending on where we're ending, you know, we didn't end very heavy last year, I think we ended with twelve kids, so, that in itself, and, and based on what the, the previous data said, it was like adding like maybe kid every other month previous to that, like, that data would have supported us being fine this year, unfortunately, it's an anomaly, and we've had two to three kids per month join our program, and so we just kind of have to look at the numbers, and kind of depending on where we end, I think we have to decide, given the, the previous year's data, whether or not we're going to need that second classroom to continue, or that second session to continue into the following year. And I will certainly keep you guys updated on that as soon as I have the, the updated data.
All right, so, correct me, because I'm, I'm not quite versed in, to the legalities of preschool or whatever. Can you deny, or do we have, I, I don't know, I'm asking a question.
No, Frank, that's, that's a great question, if a child is identified with a special need in, in, as preschool age, and requires specialized instruction, not just a related service, I have to take them in. There is no cap, there is no cutoff, the in does not get full.
No, no, I'm not quite, I just wanted to know that.
Yeah, no, that's great, yeah.
That's the scary part, Frank, it's a big, no.
So, do you need a motion from us, or do you just need consensus from us?
I think I just need consensus from you to say it's okay that we start this, and I'll send a letter home to the parents, and we'll get started.
I think you have. But I, I would ask that you try to develop some contingency plan in case we fall into this predicament.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Any other questions for Jess?
Under fam, under family engagement, I noticed.
Oh, on Janine's report? Is that Janine's report?
I guess, oh, sorry, never mind.
I can try to answer it, she's.
No, I just see that Haley is doing quite a bit of what I thought Janine did, so I was just, but that's all right, I'll.
I can have her follow up with you on that.
Jess, do you see this, do you anticipate more special ed coming in next year for the upper grades as well as the lower grades?
So, here's the deal, Jenny, enrollment's going down, but those kids that are moving in, if you notice, I even put in an extra section on my report, majority, this is the first month, December was the first month that we didn't have a special ed kid move into district, since, probably since I started.
So, since the second?
I, right, well, and, well.
This month now?
As of December, no, no, December, December, but that was, no, January, I, I know, I think we already have two, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's that.
And how are our district doing, as those increasing, maintaining?
They're maintaining right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Gray?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Any questions in regards to my report?
Yeah, the New Hampshire Conference Workshop Assembly that you went to.
First of all. I've been to a couple, so.
This is the one on data security and privacy?
Yep, okay, yeah.
Did you find that useful?
I did, I'm still, a lot of unanswered questions, and still a lot of direction we need to be given as a district on, on how far we are going to be taking our risk assessment. There'll be some information coming up tomorrow to the superintendent, from what I understand, from the DOE, in regards to direction we should be going.
Because that was in response to a, a House bill.
Right. And I think the, the plan is to not be, I mean, you can go the whole spectrum of data security, you can go from very simple to very severe, and I think the, the discussion we're having across the, the state is that, that hopefully, the plan here isn't to tie the hands of educators in the effort to be super secure. It's to find a happy medium in the middle that keeps our data secure, but also allows teachers to teach, so, we're looking at, at trying to find what that is, and, and come up with something as a direction for the state, that this is what we figures is, is good enough, sort of thing, so.
Was, was there talk amongst the participants about where people were in terms of security and?
Yeah, I mean, somewhat, I mean, it sounds like everybody's somewhat, we, we met with someone from the, the state who came in, and he couldn't officially give us anything, passed around some graphs of where they're looking to share with the DOE and get their approval, but in regards to what it looks like we're going to be expected to do, most people are, are pretty good. It's those, in, the problem is, the people that show up to like our, our, our New Hampshire CTO conference are some of the better performing districts in the state that have money and are able to do lots, the, the real question is for those small towns that are out there that, that probably don't even have a director of technology in their, in their district, and maybe I don't even network administrator, maybe it's just someone trying to help out, how are we helping them, you know, how are we going to make sure that it's not too cumbersome for a district like that, that doesn't even have the funds necessary to, because some of this can get really expensive, so, we're doing a great job in our district, we're well-prepared, I think that we'll.
We want to be careful about that.
Yeah, exactly, but I, I, I think that in comparison to where some other towns probably are, I think that we're, we're pretty good, but you can never be too, I mean.
Yeah, I know, but that's what I wanted to hear, that we're pretty good.
Right.
Did, did our computer teachers go to this computer science minimum standards hearing?
That was more just a, it, it was different people across the state that showed up, and, and there were some people from the National School Board Association, there were some directors of technology, there, there weren't, I don't think there was any teachers.
I don't think it was geared.
Yeah, it really wasn't geared for educators, it was more just talking about
Laws and.
Where are we going with that, that law, so now there's a requirement to teach computer science, so we'll be talking a little bit about what is that, and they're still trying to find out at the high school level, which, you know, it doesn't really apply in the district here, but will there be a requirement that they have to take that to graduate? And how many credits would that be, and, and if so, And, and if so, you know, what is, in our district, what is, uh, what do we decide? As a school board and as a district, is, is adequate education for computer science and, and then some of that discussions around need for certification if what we're asking our teachers to do with the students is more than fifty percent of their day, as we look at certification, well, they need to have computer science certification, so. I have conversations with Kathleen around that, we're looking at what the state's giving us for feedback, where they're expecting us to go and I, I think what we're currently doing, based upon the discussions when I was there, also, once again, we're in a good spot. I mean, we do a lot of, uh, um, the, our code with the kids in, in, in all of our schools, we do, we do coding at the middle school with robotics, I mean, we have robotics in all three grades, we, we see some of that, uh, computer science e- education with our three D printing we do. So, I think we're covering well over what they're expecting us to do at this grade level, um, and then we just have to show that that's what you guys agree is enough to meet what we expect, uh, from computer science.
Do you think, personal opinion, do you think it's important for young kids, let's just say K through six kids, to get a heavy dose or get taught or learn a lot about coding?
My personal opinion?
Yes.
Um, it's good to get exposure to it, to know what you might, might not have known, you find interesting. Is every kid going to be a coder? You know, I mean, let's be honest, this world needs all kinds of different people. I mean, you need people who are scientists and, and doctors and, and educators and you need people who might be inclined to do handiwork, like cleaning or building or whatever, so. Uh, I, I honestly think we need to expose them to all that. It's a shame that we've seen a move away from, you know, some of that carpentry work and things like that, that when I was a kid, I had to build a, a light and do some plaques and we, you know, we don't do that as much in the middle school anymore and the kids aren't getting that exposure to say, maybe is that something I, I'm interested in, so. Yeah, I mean, we need lots of coders when you look at most of the jobs that are open these days in that field. But, uh, there's also going to be a need when you look at our building projects, sometimes things are held up because we don't have enough people to do that job as well, so. That's really a big picture and how do we look at, maybe the needs of all the kids as we don't know what the future's gonna hold, so.
I, I had, I had a citizen ask me, um, when the kids take their Chromebooks home. She was concerned, and I don't really know in what way, about privacy where the, um, the microphone or the video of the Chromebook can pick up all the stuff that's going on in the home.
It, it does not, um, there, that software used to have the ability to turn on a camera and see what was going on and then there were things that came up as you learn with technology where people had abused the system and that got quickly shut down. At one point during the software, you had to have a police officer sitting there with you and there isn't even the ability in that software to do that anymore. The only thing we can do now is track it, so as soon as the device gets turned on, we know its location.
Okay.
Um, but a lot of that is, you know, we own the device, we should know where it is and how it's being used, but as for privacy, what's going on at home, there's no way of us-
And is kindergarten and first grade too young to learn coding?
No, 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 I mean, it, it, you obviously would scaffold on that and to what level. So, to understand some of the real basics of even just building blocks and how one block leads to another is, you know, uh, it's a form of coding. So, you could do coding actually without even using technology. I've seen some examples where they talk about kids doing coding with building blocks and discussing it, so.
Thanks.
The reason I'm asking is because on a recent episode of Shark Tank, which I, I'm addicted to, they had someone who came on with a, a way to teach little kids how to code and it kinda came in boxes and it was activities and so on and so forth, and all the tech- technological people on Shark Tank, the Mark Cubans and whatever, jumped on it, thought it was the greatest thing since sliced bread. And so, that got me thinking, well, if they think coding is important, you know, maybe we should, but your answer was great.
I mean, I, excuse me, I could interest my son in it, he used to be interested in coding and he's lost interest in that and I'm like, I talked to people, so, we, it came up at our, our, our conversation about, uh, the standards. One of the teachers was, he was the one teacher there that, um, he's the only one, it was one of, like, three in the state that now holds the certification currently. And he said that he has a student that just left and is making like over a hundred thousand dollars a year right out of college in coding. And how are we gonna get them to come back and become teachers and, because we don't pay a hundred thousand dollars a year to a teacher, i- in the state of New Hampshire, right, so.
Not even Massachusetts.
It's, it's hard to, you know, say, geez, I don't want my child to do that. I would love my child to come out of college and make over a hundred thousand, but not, it's not everybody's interest and he's, hasn't found that interest as of late, but he's a teenager and he likes Fortnite and football, I mean, that's his interest, so. Yeah, I, I hope he eventually goes back to it. When we talk about, well, what's your fallback plan if you don't become an NFL player? He's now saying, well, maybe I could do, I'm like, yeah, maybe do coding, that's good for you, you know, so.
Any other questions for Greg?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
You're awesome, thank you.
Feel free to go home.
I heard it's really icy in Barry, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think it's the superintendent's report.
So, um, I'd ask, uh, tonight if you would accept some donations, if you look on page twenty-six, there's a list and I have one more to add to that, but we, I would ask that you accept a three hundred dollar donation from Mrs. Laura Bletzer for intended for Hampton Academy students. Do you want me to do them individually or do you want to do them?
Let's do them all, they're all on, they're all on page twenty-six.
And then, I ask you to accept two hundred dollars from the Community Oven, again, which will be used for the Giving Tree at Hampton Academy, uh, in Marston. We received a five hundred dollars fr- from the First Congregational Church, again, to provide additional food, um, money for food for students during the day, which is really gonna be very helpful. And especially with some students in back payment and, and, uh, you know, Mary tries hard to get that money, but there, there is a limit. Um, we also received a thousand dollars from a community member, Carol Rodenberg, and this was also to be used for the, yeah, uh, students, underprivileged students, um, in terms of helping the quality of life. And last but not least, and not on that list, is a check for eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars from Gescus, uh, that was, uh, from Hampton Academy, that was the money, uh, relative to pictures, so I'd ask that you accept those.
I'd like a motion to accept those donations.
Moved Andrea, seconded Frank. Discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Great, I put a piece in my report, I did my report a little bit differently this time, just to try to change it up a little bit. Um, I have a section on school safety and we are moving forward with Alice training, uh, we will be doing some more work. Both the R SROs will be attending the leadership meeting along with Tim and, and Dave who were trained. And, uh, we will be working, and I would like to bring them to your March meeting, talk a little bit about the Alice training. And then, uh, we will mo- move forward to work with the teachers. Um, because there's some slight differences, I don't really want to get into them, but there are some different strategies with Alice training than perhaps the training we had before, so. Um, our, our Hampton PD was very supportive of it. We hope that we'll be able to do a full boat training in the summer for, and, and include other people, other teachers and folks in the district that, um, I'll keep you posted on that.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
For you? Uh, have you considered doing a, another school safety forum prior, prior to the second week in March, maybe the first week in March? You know, maybe in late February, well, we have a vacation sometime in February. I know it's kind of a rush situation, but I, I think-
We have so much in place, so it's really not a rush, it's just a matter of capturing a date and setting up a forum. I thought the last one was very successful, very well attended and people appreciated it, so we have been talking about it in the office, we were just trying to gravitate a day, hopefully after budget and then we can maybe in February, before February vacation.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you on the, um, national state grants that you received for us on our behalf. Uh, the UNH grant for the graduate program, um, which focuses on the impact of trauma in children, that's awesome. And you got a second grant, um, to address early learning preschool in the state, which has been just talked about.
I was part of those grants, but, you know, I was m- part of a larger collective and, um, the preschool is critically important and that's why our preschool monthly meeting is so important. Because our private preschool teachers and our own preschool teachers and our kindergarten teachers and Mr. Lannan share their thoughts and so I now have something that I can share with the state and the state got a five, six million dollar grant. And so, the, the parts of that grant reflect some of the needs in Hampton, so that's how that works.
Thank you, and our, on behalf of all of our students and schools and on behalf of the board, thank you so much for going out for those and, and getting them, that's great.
Yeah, they were a lot of great people and UNH was a big piece of it and, you know, you've talked about wanting to have students from UNH and the trauma grant, well, now Hampton will be in a, a, a designated site for social workers, clinical people, guidance counselors to do their practicum in Hampton with us, so. Extra hands, always more attention to the children, I think it was awesome.
Classroom teachers, no?
I still haven't done too much with that. We've been getting more students from SNU, Southern Hampshire.
Are they a half a year or a whole year?
Um, they're usually a half. UNH is a full year.
It's a full year, it's wonderful.
Right.
I had three of them, it's wonderful.
Uh, I, I thought I'd take a couple minutes, um, Les asked me to try to, uh, just go over the strategic plan, where we're at with that. Um, in your packet, I put in, um, the letter that I sent out to everyone around the strategic plan, you would find that on page forty-two. Um, we've already done three, uh, focus groups, we have another one scheduled for, by the way, I changed the date on the middle school one, it says twelve nineteen. It will be this, um, it will be one sixteen, uh, on Wednesday afternoon at two thirty in Dave, at David's School, Hampton Academy, okay? I had to change that up right before Christmas was not, um, conducive to everyone's schedule. Um, I'm working, I will have dates for the parent group, I will have a date for elected appointed officials in our community, those are three more focus groups. And you are a focus group, so I was hoping maybe tonight we could get a date that I could share with our facilitators. So, if you want to look at the calendar at the end of the meeting, I really do need a time, maybe you want to do it before the meeting? I, I, it's up to you, or you can do a work session, whatever your choices. I also put in, uh, in, in your packet, it starts on page forty-three, just a, a update of, the, the proposal for our, um, strategic plan and what that looked like. Uh, and all of the pieces to it. I don't know, any questions on that? I know, Les, you had some.
I did, I, I actually called, um, the superintendent after seeing, uh, an article in the Manchester Union Leader, fairly lengthy article about the national school district. I believe they're in the process of developing a, a plan and I, I shared that with Kathleen. Now, I, so I asked her to share what we're doing, which she did.
Any questions on that? I'm, I was, very good feedback thus far on it, so we'll, we'll, I'll keep you posted as we go through all the focus groups.
Uh, I'd like to propose something, uh, I did it, I think, last meeting, there's a meeting before that, since the, I th- I think we need to have a letter come out from the school board under your signature, Kathleen's, uh, proposing to our state legislators. They've already currently enacted no guns in the state house, I think we should have no guns within eight hundred feet or whatever falls beating of schools. Okay? I know that's, uh, uh, that was asked of Chief Sawyer when he, and basically, there's nothing they can do about it because it is the law. I think we need to reiterate to our representatives that, you know, we are looking for a law to be passed that no guns within a certain area of school, of any school.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, we want to reiterate what I think is our-
School safety.
Our position.
Our position.
Our position that schools be gun-free zone.
Gun-free zones, correct.
Okay.
Do you know that there will be some legislature around that? There are legislators-
I, I understand that, I understand that, I just want to reiterate.
All right, so, you, you want to put that in a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that.
A second?
No, second.
Okay, discussion, seems pretty cut and dried.
Except for our resource officers, there are a lot to have there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right, Pepper, but-
I was just saying, you know, how you put it, it, but-
Even the Federal Gun Free Schools Act makes, makes exception for those circumstances.
Those, except-
I think that's kind of understood.
That's understood.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
So, I'll cut them.
I, I don't think that's time sensitive particularly, is it?
I, I think the sooner we get it in, the better off we are, especially prior to our, uh, safety forum.
Okay.
And I think we should invite them.
And I will invite them.
Okay.
We invited them the last time, too.
And I saw in somebody's report, it might have been Greg's and I missed asking him about it, or it might have been yours, uh, about the, uh, the app for the bus locations. He said he was, somebody said they were look, looking into that still, still in that early-
Yeah.
Because a lot of parents have talked to me about that app. I said, I don't know much about it.
So, two, two, two conversations are, are converging. One is Greg's been looking at that app and, and the, our current provider has been sharing information about how it's being implemented and what the feedback is from other places, et cetera. And we're in the last year of a contract and we are still talking to multiple providers for next year.
Okay.
So, uh, when, when that, when we settle that one, then I think that conversation becomes
Yeah, that would be a big help.
More pressing, so.
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
That's all right, so, we'll, we'll work, I'll, I'll craft a letter and Les and I will work on it and get it out. Um, in your packet also in, is, uh, page thirty, it's right after my report, is your, your, uh, monthly enrollment. Uh, you can see you picked up four students, um, this month, since the first, last report, December one. Um, the other numbers have remained pretty steady, out of district placements, um, students accessing, homeschoolers accessing our, our programs as well as, um, charter school. Uh, and then, um, on the back page, as, as you like to see, um, on page thirty-two, there's a list of the classrooms and the class size. Also, just for your information, uh, your annual report from NESDEC is in there, just so you can get an idea about what enrollment looks like, what the projections are. And this is based on data that we submit to them and they use a formula and then, and then really just spit back to us what, what the projections will look like for enrollment. So, I thought I'd just put that in for an FYI. And, um, just looking at my report, preschool program Jess talked about, um. I'm good until we get to communication, so.
Okay, all right.
Just a letter of resignation.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Honey?
Um, the financials are all pretty, uh, pretty much predictable, this is the time of year when, uh, there aren't a lot of surprises, so you're seeing what we expect and the bottom line isn't changing much month over month. If you have any questions on any of the financials, uh, the monthly financial is there for the, for the budget summary, uh, the food service financial is there, um, the federal grants are there. Um, I could give you a quick update on the project and then, um, one item that we want to talk about tonight is just to walk through the warrant one more time.
I, I think we should do that.
Want to do that?
The warrants.
Yep.
So, that's on page forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Now, are we revoting on each of these tonight?
I, I think now that the full complement, all five of you are here.
I think that's what we had planned to do.
Remember that if there's anything that happens through the final conversation with the budget committee, through the public hearing, um, and leading up to the deliberative, you still have the opportunity to change the recommendation later.
Correct. So, um, we, we should, we can do them in order. I don't think I have to read it word for word, okay? So, um, we're, we're recommending twenty-three thousand-
Million.
Oh, million.
You wish.
I wish, I wish, twenty-three million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred and forty. And the default would be twenty-three million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, one eighty-eight.
I make a motion, we go for it.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. I don't think we need a lot of discussion because we've discussed this to death. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
The next one is-
Just going back to that, I, I think, you know, I just want to point this out. Just going back to that, I, I think, you know, I just want to point this out, that, uh, most of that is being driven by special ed. Okay? And, uh, and part of that is also contractual obligations. I just want to point that out.
The increases.
The increase.
Yes. Number two, this is, uh, the.
CESA.
PERS or the CESA, okay? And we want to raise and appropriate thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars for nineteen and twenty. Okay? And for twenty and twenty-one, it would be twenty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-five. And for twenty-one and twenty-two, it would be twenty-three thousand, seven hundred fourteen. That's the, uh, what do they call that? The ever, not evergreen, the Sanborn.
That's the Sanbornizing.
Sanbornization.
Sanbornizing of this so that you estimate what the new dollar impacts would be in each year of the proposed fund.
Okay, motion, Andrea.
Make a motion to.
Seconded Ginny.
Yep.
Discussion, I think we, we discussed this.
Just want, just want to point one thing out in discussion factor, so it's noted and recorded that the increase for salaries was one point seven five, okay, which was a modest increase that the PERS, uh, accepted.
All those in favor? Five zeros there. The next one is three hundred thousand dollars for long-term maintenance, repair, and modernization work to include technical and/or engineering services at Hampton's Marston and Center School buildings.
We continue to not include Hampton Academy in this because the biggest part of what we're focused on, uh, Marston roofs, if you look again this year. Um, but we had had that conversation multiple years ago, that while the building project was going on, it certainly didn't make sense to be investing in that building.
Correct. So that's a total two hundred fifty-two thousand for Marston and forty-eight thousand for Center. That's a total of three hundred thousand. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Frank, seconded Andrea. Discussion. All those in favor? The next one is see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand for the purpose of an additional re-school resource officer.
So now, we can still change this language. We haven't posted, so if that's.
Right. I, I don't know. It says of a second school resource officer.
Right.
To serve Center School in Marston. Well, it's the second one for Center and Marston. It's the third one for the district.
But if it's the third one overall. So if it makes more sense to say of an additional school resource officer.
I, I think that would be better.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And so it will, an additional. I will continue to keep the reference to Center and Marston.
Yes.
Okay?
So I'm going to make the motion for this one.
Good.
Second.
Seconded Ginny. All those in favor?
Uh, what, discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thought we've discussed this a lot.
No, no, I, I just want to make it for the record.
Uh-huh.
That this request was based on the safety committee meeting that we had last March. And it was at the request of Hampton taxpayers and citizens of Hampton.
Yes, it was. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. And the, the last one is the child benefit services for, um, Sacred Heart. And that, that total is, same, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. We received this from principal at Sacred Heart.
It's down fifty-seven, fifty-eight hundred. Last year was forty-four, change.
So it's a decrease.
Yep.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Oops.
Uh, no, I didn't have a motion. Motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Andrea, seconded. Pepper. Discussion. All those in favor? I think that motion has been passed for over forty years.
And just so you know, we did receive a petition, it, it is a petition warrant article, and we did receive the signatures required by a petition. Twenty-five signatures, and those signatures have been sent to your district clerk for verification. Uh, Shirley has them, and they can send them over. So that's all in order and ready to go for tomorrow night.
Okay.
Anybody need to see that, the petition? Okay, I brought it just in case. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else in the, in the financials?
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, under communication, superintendent has a letter for.
Yeah, I would ask, uh, tonight that you accept the resignation from, uh, Raya Quinley. She currently holds the position of a sixth grade special education teacher.
That was in our packet, right?
That was in the packet. It's on page forty in your packet. I also put in, uh, since there was a question regarding the resignation, I also used your policy, um, G C Q C, uh, relative to resignation, and because there was question about it. The policy tends to be more for people who, uh, have a contract and then get a better offer in July and leave. But I did put that in because that was part of resignation during the year.
Uh, I pointed that out to the superintendent, and if you look in that policy, G C Q C.
Yeah.
Uh, next to the last paragraph, uh, if the employee breaches his or her contractual obligations, fails to buy blah, 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 the board may initiate legal actions as it deems appropriate. Uh, including have their, having their teacher's certificate revoked. I don't think this is the case in this situation, but I think we all should be aware of that policy. So unless somebody says, yeah, that's what we should do, I think then we should just accept her letter of resignation.
I'm recommending.
I make a motion that we accept her letter of resignation.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, go.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, five zero zero.
So now you have.
Uh, could I ask a question regarding, not the resignation so much, but what is our contingency plan?
Uh, we have posted the position already. Um, we currently have a substitute who is filling in until we, um, find a, a certified special education. It's already underway.
Okay, I think we did all of what we need to do under governance. And I think we did everything under goal six. Uh, so I think we are moving to policy reviews. And if somebody could help me, they'll start on what page?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. And is this E H A B? Is this a second read? Yes, it is. It's a second read. Okay, any discussion? No. Motion to accept. Frank, seconded. Ginny. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Data records and retention, which is on?
Seventy.
Page seventy.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Um, moved Frank, seconded Andrea. Discussion. I, I had a, um, it was an interesting read. There were some things in there that I, I just really didn't.
Every once in a while, we get a question on some of those things, so we put everything in. When Pepper and I reviewed this, we just said, let's leave everything in there because every once in a while, we get a question. So it was quite a list.
Yeah, and it was, and where do we physically store all this?
So there are some things that, like annual reports, that are stored both in hard copy and electronic.
Right.
Um, we have a, uh, uh, data, nope, uh, optical character store, uh, God, you had to ask. An optical, we have a, a system, piece of software and, and a data warehouse where documents are scanned in. So your manifests, when that's done, those get scanned in, and then the hard copy stays around until audit, but after audit, they go because the electronic copy is out there. Uh, so across the board, one of the things that we're working more and more on is moving in the direction of special education records so we can capture those and not have them in file cabinets. But there are still a fair number of file cabinets in the district across the district building.
So in theory, because we're supposed to have these, it's permanent.
Yep.
We should have just about every, the minutes of every school district meeting back to the eighteen hundreds?
I can.
In theory.
I, in theory, but I can definitely speak until, from two thousand and eleven. But, but there were, I mean, there, there were certainly documents that came over.
Somewhere. Well, I found that stuff to be fascinating, that.
You're supposed to keep the annual reports forever, you know, any topic, you're supposed to keep them. I mean, it's.
We did find some in the public library. They're in the library.
So everything, though, that is in written form, can you take all that and?
And scan it.
And scan it and keep it, right?
It means the test of law, yeah.
Okay.
So in theory, so, we would have Pepper's junior high school report card somewhere.
Yeah, as well as yours, as well as yours.
I don't want anybody looking at mine.
Oh, we already found it. Did we finally come motion, we see Les Shepherd's.
No, no.
Next meeting.
We will, we will secure that for you.
So anyway, that's why I found it fascinating. I was just looking at, I was saying, I just did it, oh. Okay, it's been moved, moved by whom?
I'll move it. If, if nobody has, did anybody move it?
Did anybody move it?
Yeah, I think we both did.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Moved.
Thank you.
Frank.
And Andrea, seconded. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, now you're going to get a million requests. Um, and, and the last one is the television programming.
That, that's a first read, uh, for you, um, and highlighting, um, the district's role in terms of our educational TV station.
So we don't have to take action on that?
No, but next month, we'll have it on for second read.
Okay, and so then we have minutes of this.
Now, do we do old business? Oh, no, we're going to, uh, new business or what, or other? Where are we doing that? You're doing it after your minutes?
Uh, I was doing, I was just following the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So we had, uh, board meetings of December eleventh. And I, I just was wondering, um, Ginny was excused. Should, should it reflect that? It had four members present, but Ginny was, should be.
Oh, okay.
Excused. Okay.
Would you like that in the minutes? Is that what you want, in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, unless you don't want it in there.
No, that's.
No, I think, so anything else for December eleventh? Okay, motion?
To accept.
Second, Frank. All those in favor? Okay, and that's the public.
To abstain.
That, and Ginny abstained. Four zero there. And then we had a non-public. Um, so again, under absent, maybe it should be excused.
Okay, I don't, didn't do that.
Oh, okay.
We did those.
Okay. Um, motion, Pepper, second. Andrea, discussion. All those in favor?
Four zero one, right?
Yeah.
Ginny, you abstained.
Yep.
Okay, I think everybody's signed everything that they had for us.
Thank you.
And everybody had a, has a cap. Just before we go to the next meeting, do you see where it says February thirteenth?
Thank you.
That's February twelfth.
That's February twelfth, okay.
It's Tuesday. And you have a calendar with some extras.
Yeah, can I ask, uh, on the calendar? Tomorrow, twelve o'clock?
Yeah, that, that's my era.
That's the extras.
Thank you. That's my era.
That's the extras. That was the calendar with extras.
Oh, extras, okay.
There's a couple extras in there.
Yeah.
I, I, I have to figure out how that happens.
On the third page of the calendar, it's my hair plugging, but you could ignore that.
Is that, is that social studies and library meeting on Friday, the twenty-fifth?
Are we getting the hair taken again? We're still covering that.
Yes, yes.
What time is that?
It starts at.
You know, I used to have a father-in-law that did that.
At eight.
Forward the office.
Okay.
I have to go tomorrow.
So earlier, the, the superintendent asked us to provide her with a date or two for the strategic plan. So. I'm looking at a January and a February calendar. What's everybody's pleasure? You think we need a while for that, an hour?
No, an hour. He does, he does an hour, an hour, fifteen minutes.
How about the seventh of February?
Uh, February seventh is a Thursday.
Yeah.
Four o'clock.
No budget.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Oh, if that, okay, we, okay.
Can you do four?
This one.
That would be, yeah, and that would be great. We'll do it right at the office in the, in the conference room.
I'm trying to push it away from all these, uh.
Is my travel agent on set with that?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
So Thursday, February seventh at four o'clock. Great, perfect. I'll check with our facilitators, too, because I got to check their schedules, but it looks like it would work.
Okay, new business. Right?
Yeah, uh, hold on, let me look. Okay, uh, going back to last month's meeting, when we looked at, uh, protocols for the district, you know, under that program that was presented, uh, I'd like to, uh, take a step back, kind of do a little bit more research on that to see, you know, other school districts and how they're doing. Before we kind of jumped into it without really evaluating it.
Okay, I think you, I, I'm not sure it was protocols. Um, it was, there was another, are you talking about the presentation that we had?
Yeah.
By, um.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe it's.
Oh, the critical incident plan.
Yeah, it was called the critical incidents.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what it was called.
Yeah, that, that.
And I'd like to reconsider it. I, I don't want to, I just want more information. That's all I'm looking for before we.
I have a.
Before we jump into it and move forward, I think we need to take a step back and look at it.
I have a ton of information in my office.
Okay.
State stuff, yeah.
We, we can look at it, okay? I just want to just drop this back, okay? And there's a reason.
Okay.
Okay?
Other new business.
Yeah, one other thing. Uh, on the building, uh, have we, I'm looking at you.
Yeah.
Have we looked at prior to, you know, signing off on the building, can we get a thermal scan done on the building to make sure everything's up to snuff? I heard that's the latest and greatest, where they take imagery.
We did it, we did it on the old building, you know.
We do it.
Oh, okay, so we're going to do it.
Yeah, yeah. H L Turner does it for us.
Okay, okay, fantastic.
We, we do thermal scans of your roofs on all three buildings every year.
Yeah.
No, but I meant the new building to just identify leaks and all that, well, you know. So they don't come back with a five billion dollar more in repairs. Okay.
One of the beauties of this project is, is that we're in a new section, right? And so any of the little quirks in the building can be addressed because the team is still there. It's really been quite nice. You're not calling up somebody and having a, having a crew come down, they're here.
Yeah.
And address it.
No, no, that's one thing.
Right, right.
It, it, it is nice because all of the, many of the systems that we've put in place, alarms and security, uh, access control, intercoms, you name it, all of those are getting worked out because, and, and the, and the answer, nice, you know, comfortable answer is, if you have any questions, they're in the trailer. Just call them because, you know, you don't have to go looking for a one-eight-hundred to call some vendor remotely. The folks that installed it are right here walking through it. So it, it is nice to work it out there.
No, the only reason I brought it up, okay, was because, you know how after you finish a building or a thing, all of a sudden, a year later, too, you, you, there's some, there's some stress cracks, this, that, whatever, then we have to go back to the voters for this and that, just pick that. I'm just trying to avoid that.
Yeah, just, so thirty more seconds to remind you, we, part of the soft costs that we had in our package, um, that went to the voters, we've done a, we've done a battery of testing, quote unquote, right? So every step of the way, steel has been sampled and tested, concrete has been sampled and tested, so that we've been able to match the spec.
No, that's fine.
We have, when we did the, you know, the, the neighbors didn't like. When we did the, you know, the neighbors didn't like the compaction when we were getting rid of the page and do some of that stuff on the site, and I don't blame them, but it's, they test that, too, to make sure the compaction is right. We also have engaged on the other end of this, on the back end, a commissioning agent. And the commissioning that is being done is another contract, and they consider all of the systems. They consider the specifications, what was submitted by subcontractors through the contracting entity, bottom page or so, and then implemented or installed. And they felt safe that air handling systems and plumbing systems, all of the systems have to match the specifications that were identified for them initially. And we've asked them to go one step further and to compile through that process, call it a preventative maintenance binder or checklist, procedure manuals, so that all of the systems get tested out to ensure that they have been installed and are working according to design. And Keith will end up at the end of it with a big binder or series of binders of when do filters have to be changed and what's, how does that happen and what's the part number that goes in that, blah blah blah. All of that's being delivered to us by the commissioning agent as well. So, all of those, all of that, testing and commissioning have been steps to try to protect the taxpayer investment and make sure that what we get is stable, solid, and is performing and that we don't go back later and say, wow, why did the concrete crack or why did the window not open or close? All of that has been part of the, part of the protection we've built into the package, so.
So, when it's all said and done, who signs off on it? You?
Yeah, we do, we do.
And I'm guessing right now, well, you haven't got to the time where there'll be a big punch list to do.
There's a significant punch list still outstanding on the new wing.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've been tackling some of that, but some of it is better, we wanted to get in, but some of it's better done when there aren't kids around.
So, are you the clerk of the works, so to speak?
Your clerk of the works function is really trident. Gino and Paul Pendelina, yep, they're with us on that, but they're working with Kathleen and I and Keith and Dave right along.
We work very closely with our architect, too, because he walks through and he has that punch list, and I compare our list with his list, so it's got a lot of checks and balances.
Any other new business?
No, but I'd like to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A three-two-A.
Okay. Roll call, vote? Oh, second, sorry. Second.
I'll second it.
Andrea. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero. Now, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.